Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, May 13th, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Barb, will you -- oh, nope, it's Marnie. Marnie, will you --
Yeah. Councilmember Leaks May?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Mayor -- excuse me, Mayor Potem Polika.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
I'd like to move we excuse the absence of Mayor Coulter.
Support.
Okay. Moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Next item would be to approve the agenda.
I'd like to suggest a change to the agenda. I'd like to move consent agenda item 7C to presentations, please.
Any other changes?
I move we accept the agenda as amended.
Support.
Moved and supported. Marnie?
Councilmember Martin?
Yes, sorry.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Potem Polika.
Yes. The agenda is adopted. First order of business is presentation on the creation of -- we're getting -- I'm sorry, did you want to move it to 7A or 7B?
B's fine.
Okay. So, yeah, the first one is going to be a presentation on the creation of the 2020 U.S. Census Count Committee. Who is going to do that? Is that -- excellent. Adam?
Adam Loomis, Assistant Building Official and Community Development for the city of Ferndale. Dave Movia, our GIS technician, and we would like the opportunity to talk tonight about the upcoming 2020 U.S. Census and the formation of the Complete Count Committee.
Good evening, Council. The U.S. Constitution requires that a census be conducted every 10 years to count everyone in the 50 states, the Pacific Territories, the District of Columbia, and Puerto Rico. That data is then used for legislative districts, school districts, and allocation of federal So every year, the U.S. federal government has $675 billion, excuse me, that is allocated through the information drive from the census. And this is allocated by the state level and local level. And in 2018, Ferndale received $78,943 in CDBG funds. With better enough information in 20 -- from the 2020 census, we could receive more. And we also will get targeted information from the census as well. So this was the map of the city of Ferndale with the partition -- participation rates from the year 2000 and the year 2010 for the census. In 2000, we had an 83 percent rate, and in 2010, that fell to 77 percent. We don't have complete information under discrepancy of why it fell, but most of it is in relation to the economic decline in 2008. The U.S. Census Bureau typically likes to get a response rate of 89 to 92 percent. So we hope to aim to get that much higher for the census. The city of Ferndale here is broken up into seven tracks. It doesn't show here because we wanted to display the total participation rate for the entire city, but it's broken up into seven tracks here, and then we're -- with the census data, we're given direct information on each of those tracks and their participation
So to be more specific on how we spend our money and what the benefit is of getting a complete count during the census, would that money and those numbers go to establishing the fair market rate when we're talking about HUD? That directly relates to getting affordable housing, which is a priority, obviously, here in the city of Ferndale. Circling back to CDBG, getting higher allocations or, you know, from CDBG helps us fund Haven, which every year we spend $9,000 at Haven, $9,000 at OLSA, Oakland Limited and Human Services Agency, which is yard services. And we always go through that, and we have -- if we could get more, we could reach more residents. It's not a shortage of people in need necessarily, but it's a shortage in funds that are available. So the more complete count that we can get, the better we can serve our residents and establish data that shows us what our housing needs are going to be in the future. It's even used for emergency routing services for police and fire, down to districting and how many seats we're going to wind up with in the House of Representatives. So Captain America's helping us out with the census this year. There's a couple opportunities for Ferndale residents to become involved in the census. So the mayor and council are going to help us form a Complete Count Committee. And through nominations, we're going to try and get a representation of all residents and business owners. And the Complete Count Committee is going to try and develop strategies on hard-to-reach demographics, particularly school-age residents and renters, maybe people who don't typically get the mail that are going to the locations or don't show, you know, an active interest in government-sent envelopes. Not familiar with that at all. And so with the forming of the Complete Count Committee, there is a commitment. They will be meeting twice monthly for the first few months and then monthly up until the count and then a month afterwards. So we'll say May of 2020. So we're requesting that we form the Complete Count Committee, and if Ferndale residents want to nominate themselves or other people, we would also take those into consideration. And there's an email address established that goes right to myself and Dave at 2020census@ferndalemi.gov. Or the U.S. Census Bureau is also looking for people that would like to work for them. So they're not Ferndale employees, this would be -- U.S. Census Bureau has jobs that start at $14 to $24 an hour, and those are at 2020census.gov/jobs. Thank you.
I believe we are actually going to be voting tonight on the creation of this committee. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Council, is there any questions or comments that you'd like to make?
I do have a question. It's my understanding that the Census 2020 this year is not going to be mailing every -- or 2020, it's not going to be mailing every resident an actual survey to complete, and a lot of it's going to be done online. And this is causing great concern around cities because that is going to be leaving the door open for fewer people to complete the survey, which I'm questioning how we're going to get 89 percent. And so I'm really interested in this committee, figuring out how we're going to target some of our more vulnerable populations to complete the survey. I know you're coordinating with the city of Detroit, I think, and the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan, which is funding a big initiative, at least in Detroit, with the neighborhood nonprofits. And so I'm interested in just learning how our committee is going to target getting our lower-income and seniors who may not want to take or have access to online forums to getting the survey completed. It's really disappointing our federal government under-invested in this census this year or for next year. So I guess I have no questions. More of a commentary.
Anyone else? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move that city council approve that the city of Ferndale establish a 2020 consensus Complete Count Committee to support the goals of the ideals for the 2020 census.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any additional comments or questions? I just want to confirm, I don't think it was in your slide, but the current committee or the base committee will be the mayor, Dave Coulter.
Yes, sir.
Yourself, Dave, and yourself, Adam, as well as Justin Lyons, our city planner.
Yes, that's right.
And I do have one last comment. While Adam has presented tonight about how the city gets allocations from the federal government for our city programming, individuals who may be applicable for federal programming on a household basis are impacted. So taking the survey impacts residents outside of their local government, too, getting them access to other services beyond what the local government can provide. So this is why it's so critical that all cities really concentrate on making sure everybody takes the census, because it's even harder than it was in 2010 to get people to take it. So the government hasn't -- our federal government has not made it easier to take the survey. So -- my pen dropped.
Gotcha.
I'm quite angry about it. So.
I understand. Marnie, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Piana?
Yep.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Potem Polika.
Yes, and so it passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Next item on the agenda is the addition --
No, it's the Oakland County Commissioner, Helene Zach.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, our second presentation is our favorite county commissioner, Helene Zach.
Thank you, and I'm your only county commissioner.
I meant through the years.
We didn't say how you want it.
I have a bag of information from SEMCOG that I'm going to leave some handouts. They are promoting walk, bike, drive safe in southeast Michigan. It's a whole campaign. There is actually state of Michigan legislation that says that people driving cars have to swing at least three feet away from a bicycle rider, you know, move around them to protect bicycle riders. There's obviously an issue, and so there are materials I'm going to leave. Be seen. Safety is everybody's responsibility and so forth so that we can have healthier, safer communities.
Is there a website? Is there a website?
There is. And I'm going to make sure that we post these, link things in. Want to give you an update. We are still offering vaccinations for measles. The good news, we're not -- we did an excellent job trying to contain it. So we're really not getting many new cases at this point, which I'm glad. Our Oakland County Health Department was amazing. They offered lots of different vaccination clinics in communities. They were going into people's homes swabbing so that they could contain the outbreak around here. I do want to remind residents that we do offer a live, healthy Oakland discount card, and this has prescription drug discounts. There is a lower-cost dental plan that people can purchase. These are services that are offered through the National Association of Counties. And if you're interested in signing up, you can find information at our oakgov website/livehealthyoakland. We also did pass a resolution making Oakland County a welcoming county, and I'm very proud of that. I have heard some unbelievable public comments about being well, you know, people are so pleased that we are a welcoming county. Really touching stories of what has happened to some of our residents. So I'm very glad to be promoting that. Also, you know, we are working on an ORV park in Oakland County Parks, the state off-road vehicle. It'll be the closest place to people in Oakland County. It'll be in North Oakland County at Groveland and Holly Townships. And so far, the state has been the investor in this program. I am watching who's investing, because I don't want our precious Oakland County parks dollars invested in a North Oakland County park without fear, you know, sharing the wealth down here. We also are implementing the -- healthy breakfast program is going well to increase more breakfast, free breakfasts throughout the Oakland County. So any other questions?
Council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you.
Next order of business is for C, adoption of proclamation recognizing May 13 through the 18th, 2019, as National Poppy Week. Councilwoman Martin, I believe you're going to read the proclamation.
Yeah, we have a proclamation to read. Let's have Frank introduce it, if you could.
Well, I'd rather see the proclamation.
All right, let me read the proclamation. The week of May 13th to the 18th, 2019, will have a special national significance because of its designation as National Poppy Week, a period when the emphasis is on raising of funds for a broad project of unquestionable merit. And Americans enthusiastically support this annual tribute to their war dead, which provides funds for the rehabilitation and increased comfort of those deserving disabled veterans of all wars. And this flower of remembrance again will be handled by the American Legion and the VFW Veterans with its auxiliary units. Now therefore, Gregory Polika, Mayor Potem of the city of Ferndale, officially declare and proclaim May 13th to the 19th National Poppy Week in the city of Ferndale and urge all citizens to support this sale, which has great significance for the living victims of war.
Thank you. Okay. First of all, it's usually customary for myself to go to the council first and solicit the funds for the poppies. As you know, the poppies signify from the war dead that died at Flanders Field at World War II. And as you know, most of the funds have gone to the servicemen that are in the VA that are being taken care of while they come from all -- excuse me, all the wars. And these poppies here are handmade every year, every year. I mean, I got some from years back and back, and what we do is we solicit for the funds. It's not a sale. It's more of, we solicit for donations. So while I go through the council, I'd like to have the audience also participate. And one note to make, this would be my 39th year that I've been up to the council to present the first poppy. So I got one more year and I'll finish 40, and who knows whatever comes after that. Thank you much for those who contribute towards this, and I will walk around first with the council so they can take care of business after I get done with them, and I'll just go through the audience, okay? Thank you very much.
Seeing Dave, Mr., he owned them all.
Oh, yeah. Oh, do I have to buy -- I guess I will.
He owes me.
He's probably watching it on TV.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you.
A rare event. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Here's the proclamation. Thanks.
Buying Dave's.
I bought Dave's. You only gave me one, though.
On his own.
Oh, thanks.
Sure, please. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, our next order of business is called the audience. This is the time when anyone from the public may speak to council on any topic that is not on the agenda this evening. You will have an opportunity to speak to any agenda item when we bring it up for discussion. You'll have up to three minutes to address the issue, and we ask that you please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Pollock, members of council, Roger Schmidt, Vice President of the Ferndale Historical Society. Just like to remind everyone that the museum will be open Memorial Day from 10 o'clock in the morning till 1:00 PM, open house. Our normal hours are Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday from 10:00 in the morning till 1:00 in the afternoon, and Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00. It's always a good idea to call ahead, though, to make sure someone's going to be there, because we are strictly volunteers. It's a little hard to get into the museum these days now with the new condominium development next door to us. What you have to do is use the alley between Livernoy and Dover, and you have to actually drive behind the condominiums like you were going to park there, and then we're at the end of their driveway. A little tough to find us, but we're still there. And we are actively seeking volunteers. We are in desperate, desperate need of volunteers. Don't have to have any training, no formal training, we'll train you. So if you're interested, stop by and see us. We've just partnered with Kroger for fundraising effort. To participate, you need a Kroger Plus card, and if you have one, you can go online to Kroger's website, www.kroger.com. If you don't have an account, you'll have to sign up for one, create an account, and then you go to search, the search engine there, and you can look for Ferndale Historical Museum. And you either put that in or our code, which is NM220, and then you'll need the little number on the back of your rewards card, and you can become a donor. And what they do is they will give a percentage of your purchase, it's a small percentage, to donate to us. It doesn't affect your discount or anything else, but we will get a small donation. And you have to renew it every year, but it's a worthwhile program, other museums are doing it. So I'll leave a few of these at the back. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Prother.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, council members. My name is Nadine Hatton, and I'm here today to introduce myself to you as one of the two new magistrates in Hazel Park. Last month, you all approved me, and I wanted to, one, again, introduce myself, and two, to say thank you very much. And I look forward to assisting Magistrate Brennan in serving the city of Hazel Park. It's my honor. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Sheri A. Wells, 315 West Troy. I was a census crew leader in 2000 when we had a city manager who worked in Ferndale and lived in Hazel Park, and he knew we had as many people in Ferndale and Hazel Park, but I had a wonderful crew, and we got over 20,000 people. They just started assigning us to Ferndale, and they pulled us off where we would have matched that 20,000.
I hope you sign up again, Sheri.
I might, I might. You have the Clean the F Ferndale Up on Saturday, and I left a message for Michael Larry, because what some of us do when we go out and clean up is we get a reuse of those plastic grocery bags, because you can loop one or two of them over your arm and put the returnables in there and recyclables in another one. I was helping with a rotary park in the county, and I also found two fairly new pieces of clothing that I think some mothers were really furious at their kids having left behind. I couldn't match them with the kids, so I went home, laundered them, and donated them to the Salvation Army. So there's a lot of other opportunities for the recycling, and I understand that that same, this coming Saturday, there will be an opportunity to recycle electronics and some of the other stuff that some of us just don't get around to driving up to Sacra. Speaking of recycling, I've been reading up on it, the single stream was supposed to make things easier for us, but apparently those of us who were either raised by people who grew up during the Depression and never threw anything away, reused and recycled like it was not a new thing, as it is now, are not following some of the procedures. Once someone's bin is at the curb, it's considered abandoned, so I took a peek in a couple of them as I was walking around Ferndale, and I found pizza boxes. If you have a pizza box that has a liner, the liner usually gets all the grubby food stuff. But if it doesn't, the box does, and it doesn't belong in the Sacra bin. The lid can be easily torn off, and the rest of it has to be thrown in garbage. So what is ruining a lot of the recycling, we aren't doing as much recycling as we could yet, is the fact that people are being a little sloppy, or someone walks by and mistakes one big green bin for the other and throws garbage in what should be recycling. And final point. Went somewhere. It's just extremely important. We have enough problems with recycling. The city still gets paid more for recycling than what we throw in trash, correct?
Correct.
A few years ago, I did a few demonstrations about recycling, and one of the things I learned is when Sacra took one garbage truck from each of the 11 communities and went through and pulled out what could have been recycled, they figured, prorated, Ferndale could have recycled enough stuff to have paid for a full-time police officer, full-time firefighter, and a full-time code enforcement officer that the residents are throwing away, not city council's fault, unless I check your bins.
Thank you, Sheri.
Miss Music.
Good evening, Council. My name's Julia Music, and I'm here to represent the Ferndale Pride Festival, which is coming up just 19 days from now and county. So got our new poster hat off the press. I'm going to use my cheat sheet a little bit. We have more events than ever coming up this year.
Oh, thank you.
Got to have Hannah White. So I'm just going to, I'm not going to tell you every single event, because it's overwhelming, but I will tell you that the Hot Daddy's contest is coming up this Saturday, so we'll see who wins the crown this year. And if any of you would like to participate in Hot Daddy's, just let us know, and we'll get you signed up. We have our flag-raising ceremony. I'm seeing that some people have interest.
I know, that's not all that we're saying.
No, they didn't tell you about this new part of the job, right? We have our flag-raising ceremony right here in front of the City Council Building on Thursday, May 30th, and that'll take place at 6:00. And then right after, I encourage everyone to go to Affirmations to see the art opening from Renaissance High School. It's actually one of the most beautiful and moving art openings I've ever seen, so you want to make sure to check that out. On the Day of Pride, obviously, we kick off with the Rainbow Run from Chamber of Commerce, and then we start our weddings at 11:00. And at 12:30, we will open the main stage. 1:00, you will see our new grand opening, which I'm keeping a secret, and then our entertainment begins. Our booths are open. We have over 180 vendors this year, so it's our biggest, it's our largest number of vendors ever. And then we have Drag Queen Story Hour going on, we have a children's area with a rock wall and face painting and art projects going. We have a youth prom over at Affirmations for people ages 13 to 20, and after-parties all over the city. Grasshoppers hosting a sponsored after-party, and then almost every bar and restaurant is participating, as you can see by this insanely large poster, and there are even more sponsors that you can find online. This year is the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall Rebellion, which is significant for the LGBT people. It marks the date where people stood up against police arresting us for being LGBT, and rioted, and started our pride festivals and pride gatherings and fights for our freedoms. So Motor City main stage has Shamir as its headliner. Genesis Credit Union dance stage has Joe Guthrie. And after, we will, of course, have parties at Axel and Rosie's and the Bears Car Wash a week later, and so much more. Our pride guide will be online, probably starting tomorrow, so please check it out. And we hope to see you all at Ferndale Pride this year. If you'd like to volunteer, please sign up at our website, www.ferndalepride.com. Follow us on Facebook and Instagram, that is where we put the most things up. Thank you, guys, very much for supporting Ferndale Pride.
As long as we're talking about pride a little bit, downtown Ferndale businesses have always gotten behind pride and kind of jumped up and shown their pride and supported the event. So this year, we are sponsoring a window contest, a window decorating contest for Ferndale Pride, where area businesses, anybody in the downtown, and anybody outside the downtown if they want to take part in it, decorate their windows. We'll have three judged categories, and we'll also have a public vote favorite for our pride windows, and those windows will stay up all month long, the month of June. So we're getting some really good response already, so we really think that it's going to be a great thing and a great way to show pride, not only in support of the LGBTQA community, but also pride in their business and pride in being part of Ferndale. So we're really excited about that. Since spring is finally coming, we are, we know everybody's kind of wants to get in bikini or Speedo shape, right? So starting this week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of this week, you have the opportunity to find your fit in downtown Ferndale. A number of local fitness facilities are offering free classes and demos. If you go to the Downtown Ferndale Facebook page, we have an event set up there, and you can find out there's classes in the morning, in the afternoon, in the evening. You can check out CrossFit, or yoga, or learn how to meditate a little bit, all sorts of opportunities. Then we will roll right into spring, summer, with our Art of the Cocktail, June 20th, our craft cocktail competition fundraiser for public art. July, August, and September, our Get Real Outdoor movies are coming back on Vester Street. We are letting the public vote between two finalists for each month. So we just closed voting for our July movie, we'll be showing Spider-Man Into the Spider-Verse, apparently that's a very popular movie. Voting for August closes out this Thursday, and it's pretty hotly contested between The Goonies and Bill and Ted's Excellent Adventure. So we hope you will, again, we hope, again, you will all go to our Facebook page and vote for your favorite. And then finally, this Thursday, Main Street Oakland County Awards. Downtown Ferndale won an award for On a Shoestring, which is a project that didn't take a whole lot of money but had a big impact on the downtown. And it was really a collaborative project. The CED intern from last year, Mara, came to us with an idea to do some placemaking projects in the pedestrian alley that connects West Nine Mile and Troy Street. We did some fun art installation and put in some furniture, and put in a piano, and had some games. So that, apparently, this was one of the most hotly contested awards of the night, but we won. So we couldn't have done it without, obviously, Mara's determination and hard work, and then the cooperation of our DPW, who always makes it happen, and the volunteers who helped us install it during Clean the Ferndale Up, which, like Sheri said, is this Saturday. This year, we will be doing something new in the alley, as well as doing some updates to our other pedestrian alley behind Dino's. We'll be freshening up that seat wall there. So anybody that wants to join us, make sure you sign up for Clean the Ferndale Up and say that you want to help the DDA. That's all I got? Thanks.
Thank you, Cindy.
I forgot part two of the poppies. I forgot one thing. This is our purpose to the general public. On May 16th, this coming Thursday, I will be out there on Nine Mile and Woodward. So those who always look forward to seeing me there, I will be there, rain, shine, or sleet, snow. But again, that's this coming Thursday, I'll be there probably from 9:00 to 5:00, so those who want to donate through their behalf, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Walking from Michigan, fallen foot shoulders for 11 years now, and we're back again this year looking for more volunteers. We have 200-plus soldiers that we carry for. We need about 300 people to help us get this done. We'd like to have, you know, one person per placard. So we meet at Livernoy's and Maplehurst. At about 8:00, we start meeting there, and we'd like people to be there by 9:45, so we can kick off the parade at 10:00 sharp.
I just want to do a little add-on here, that we're going to be passing this flyer around, and please take this flyer and memorize it and pass it on. And it's, you know, we're the, we're going to meet for the foot float, and if you do a store, grocery store, some buildings that you have, if you can get them to put it in the windows to share the news, but we really need people to walk. This is what makes a foot float work, feet. So with that being said, we're going to, Kevin's already starting to pass out some flyers, and everybody will get one, and please, please pass it on, okay? And don't throw it in your recycling bin, put it on a window somewhere. And I'd like to ask council if we can have one of these posters put here and maybe in some other buildings?
Absolutely.
That we can put up, okay? Where can I?
You can give them to Marnie.
Okay, thank you very much.
My name is Christy Faulkner. I live at 306 West Troy, right across from the new DOT construction project, which we're very excited about. I've lived there for the last nine years. Love where I live, love the excitement of downtown. In nine years that I've lived there, I've never had a problem with vehicles approaching my property, anything like that, but in 10 days, the span of 10 days, I've had two vehicles hit my fence. Kind of alarming, raising a bit of red flags for myself. So I think the, the lack of planning about what's going on with delivery trucks is a real big problem, and I think that's likely the cause of this issue. So I reached out when this project was beginning, I reached out to council, city officials, with a question about what was going to be going on with the truck traffic. There's lots of trucks coming and going in addition to the busy downtown traffic that we have going on. I didn't receive a response about what the plan was for all of that. A few days later, I had reached out, because I had noticed when the fences went up for the construction project, it was obstructing the view of a stop sign that is very important to that intersection. I reached out to council and to city officials, asking what the plan was with the stop sign, and a few days later, no response, but the stop sign was just taken down. To me, that's a really big concern, to lose that stop sign. I see, I live there, I see the traffic that flies by, I see the pedestrians that walk that come and go. I've definitely seen an increase in the speed of cars trying to race through the light at Nine Mile. I'm not a person that, like, is always looking out my window, but it's just something that you notice when you live right there. And then at the beginning of May, I, I reached out to council again, and specifically, I actually reached out to the city planner. Sorry, my bad, I wasn't to the council, it's the city planner, keeping track of it. Reached out to the city planner and the assistant city planner, because I had noticed that the safety posts that I had that block my fence were taken down. I had noticed that they were taken down, because construction vehicles were coming up a bit onto my property to make that turn, which is concerning to me. So I had asked them to please replace those, and I want to give a shout-out to the assistant city manager for expediting that process. They were installed the next day, they were put back, I appreciate that. But my fence was hit in that process when they were removed. The fence has not been fixed, which is not so much of a problem anymore, because a few days later, another delivery truck ran into my fence, causing a giant 12-plus-foot gash. The fence has fallen. Was very concerned, because I could have been back there guarding, there could have been kids in the yard, there could have been animals. When I had the officer come to my house to explain what happened, because I was at work all day, as was my wife, he said that the delivery truck driver, it was an accident, he was going, forgot to put his fence up or his lift gate up, so the lift gate was the thing that struck my fence, but he was also going the wrong way down the one-way alley. He was not issued a citation, I'm concerned about that. He was very, this driver was not obeying traffic laws, and I know it is the discernment of the officer to issue a citation, but if we have laws in place for safety, like one-way alleys in a very busy downtown area, I think that we need to adhere to those laws. His excuse was that it's difficult for these alley, but they can't make that turn anymore. So I'm, I'm not up here to just complain, I just wanted to give you a picture of what's been going on downtown and specifically in my neighborhood, but I'm a very solutions-oriented person. There's three solutions that I see right off the bat. Number one, I think we need to look at the traffic patterns, especially for these delivery trucks. We've got Western Market, we've got lots of bars, we've got restaurants, we've got all these things that are getting deliveries every single day down there. I think we need to look at what the traffic pattern is for where they're making their deliveries and how they're accessing these businesses. I think that we need to look at what's going on with pedestrian traffic that's coming and going. There's not a defined place for pedestrians to cross when they're coming north on Allen. It was really nice when we still had that access to the West Troy, how there were pedestrian crosswalks, there were places that were, you know, signed that say pedestrians have the right of way. I think we need that because I see a lot of people walking in the street and it's very dangerous because, third solution, I think we need to reinstate those stop signs. So stop signs were really important in slowing traffic down. People do what they want to do, so people are still crossing, not at proper crosswalk areas. I know we don't want them crossing by the alley, they're still doing that, but the stop signs at least slowed traffic down. I think if we implement those things, the safety concerns that we have are going to be addressed and hopefully my fence will not be hit again in the next two years. Thank you.
Yeah, normally we don't address issues at call to audience, but Joe, if, if you could please review the issues that she stated and make sure that those things are addressed.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to a few of those.
I'm, I'm happy, I, I know it's not something that we need to talk to you now, but I'm very happy to discuss these sorts of things with you. I think it's just something that I wanted to make council all aware of.
Yes, and we appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I also want to know, is there, her homeowner's insurance is probably covering all the repairs to her fence and so I didn't know if there was some liability on any of the trucks part.
We're, I'm not concerned about who's paying for the fence, we're definitely going to take care of this through insurance.
I am, I am for you.
Oh. That's not my concern. My concern is more so like what's going on with the traffic patterns, because this is going to be an ongoing issue. So I think it's just something that the city needs to address.
So broadly, I'd like to just touch on a couple of these things. Whoa, sorry. Regarding the, the deliveries, we did actually work with the businesses on communicating a plan for deliveries. There is a plan in specific delivery zones temporary to, to speak to how these drivers are supposed to come in and deliver goods and distribute goods. Whether that plan is being executed is something that we have to do some diligence on, but we have alerted both Republic Parking and the Police Department to the issue and that we've called some attention for extra patrol and extra kind of input to make sure that the intentions are actually being executed.
Right. And I know that alley is definitely a, you know, a
That was not part of the distribution plan.
Dangerous space, right. And actually, the officer had come to my house, also informed me that a Pepsi truck had just the week prior struck gas lines and meters in the alley. So I think that's an area that definitely needs to be looked at again.
May ask, you made reference to a couple instances to reach out to us and you didn't get a response back.
Yeah.
What vehicles are you using to reach out?
Email. I, I sent an email that addressed all of council. And I received one email back that said, we'll get back to you. And then the second one, I didn't get a response.
Okay, thank you.
But the third, the third time when I had written specifically to the assistant city clerk, he had gotten back to me and very promptly addressed the matter and I appreciate it.
Oh, and that's great, I'm concerned about the first two times, because that's to us and
Yeah, we're
So when we have a discussion
I can forward those to you again.
Could you?
Yeah, sure, make sure they're going to the right places.
And then Joe, if you can get back to us on the whole thing.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks. There's a serious issue with people going the wrong way on that driveway, on that alleyway too. They're always going against the arrow. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of council. Paul Weisberger, 211 East Nine Mile Road. I have next to me Dennis Zoma, who we find ourselves in the odd situation of having one of our competitors, and we also have some members of Thrive, and I'm from Fordy Mar, which are the three provisional permit holders for the medical marijuana license. We have a letter that's, should be on your desk or it was presented to you. I don't want to go over the entire letter, that's why we drafted, so you could read it. But the nuts and bolts of it is that we find ourselves all, and the phrase I used is rounding third base, headed for home. We've all spent in excess of seven figures on the project. We are, I would say, all very close to getting a CVO in the next two weeks to five weeks if the weather will stop raining on us. We had to demolish the north half of a building so we could put in some site work so we could have proper parking. But we are very excited to complete our projects and bring this thing home and get a CVO. What the ordinance requires is that before we can apply to the state for our final permit, we have to have a final CVO, not a temporary CVO, a final CVO. And then we have the state come and do inspections and then at some point, the state issues a final license. What's happened in the last month and a couple weeks is the Governor Whitmore has actually removed the medical marijuana board and has shuffled those duties to the MRA, which I believe is the medical, or marijuana regulatory agency. And that, we don't have any feedback on the timelines as to how long it takes to get the final permit. And we have our entire time, effort, and investment, which we, I would believe to a, to a permit holder, even though we're competitors, have all worked in good faith to get to the finish line. We are, I'll speak very briefly about us, but we are boarding the inside of it right now. I have materials coming in and fixtures, delivery on June 15th. I believe Dennis is a little bit further along and I can't speak to where Thrive is on Academy, but I would say we are all past third base, heading to home, Pete Rose style, hopefully Ray Fosse is not at the home plate. And we're just, we're hoping that we can have somebody from council or some members of council, direct staff to come up with an ordinance that would grant another 90 days. And another 90 days would mean that the ordinance would say that all three permit holders have, provisional permit holders, would have until October 1st. That would be 90 days from the current expiration date of July 1. But I can tell you, to a, to a permit holder, we all are in good faith, trying to complete this, we're not sitting on our hands. We had to relocate a tenant, again, in the city of Ferndale, we were able to relocate them, demolish a building, buy the property, and accomplish all the interior of a world-class facility within the, the timeframe became very tight. But all three of us stand together in uniform, asking for at least an ordinance to be presented for council's consideration. And obviously, the time is of the essence because we've got the one meeting in May and then we would have something in June. And I think we'd all lose the rest of our hair and create more ulcers if we don't have some sort of answers to whether we have a little bit of cushion to bring this thing home. Thank you.
I, I, again, we normally don't address things at call to audience, however, we did receive your letters, or your letter. And staff and our legal counsel has been directed to move forward with that with a recommendation to council. I cannot guarantee that something's going to come before the May 28th meeting, but staff has been directed at, as of today, to, to work on investigating the issue further at your, your request.
We appreciate it, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Good evening, hi, I'm Sharon Chess.
Congratulations, Joe. I was kind of hoping for a woman, but I'm really glad it's you. Anyways, I'm here representing the Ferndale Community Concert Band. We have a fundraiser this coming Friday at 7:00 in the evening at the Ferndale Elks Club on Woodward and Vester. It's a Uker tournament, it's $20 cash at the door. And just a good time and for a good cause. And then our next concert is on Father's Day at the Ferndale High School at 3:00 in the afternoon. Immediately following is a free ice cream social to all of those who come to hear us play. And of course, we'll have the musician bake sale available as well. We're also printing off all our CDs to the last six concerts. The CDs will be available both on our website and at the concert and they'll be $10 each. So I'm looking forward to seeing all of the residents here and city council at our Father's Day concert, 3:00, free at the Ferndale High School auditorium. Thank you.
Mr. Larry.
Good evening, council and residents at home and everybody here. I just want to remind everybody that this Saturday is our annual Clean the Ferndale Up. It'll start at 9:00 AM and officially end at noon. Anyone who is interested in volunteering for the day, you certainly able to register now, online, on the city's website, ferndalemi.gov. And then also on the same, at the same time, on the same day, but with an extension of two more hours because of the popularity, we are doing our annual temporary recycling drop-off station right here at the City Hall parking lot. And this is with the partnership of Department of Public Works and SACRA. Just to clarify that, the items that we will be accepting have expanded, which is a good thing too. Styrofoam, metal items, appliances and other large, heavy items are not accepted though. CDs, DVDs, plastic bags, hard, hardcover books, electronics, light bulbs, paints and oils, but they must have a lid to keep them from spillage. Aerosol cans, any type of glass, other household hazardous items such as spray paints, aerosol cans, tires. And we will also be providing paper shredding. And for paper shredding, it might be a long line, so you have, we just ask that you're a little patient, because each person gets a chance to shred their, their product and then they move on. But we do have an, an industrial shredding service that comes in and it's very, very quick. We just make sure that there's no plastic involved in your paper. Paper staples are acceptable, but not paper clips. But, so that'll be from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM here at Ferndale City Hall. So hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Larry, is there an age restriction? I know some National Junior Honor Society students that would love to get some hours. So are you accepting volunt, is there an age restriction as far as volunteerism?
Yes, so when they register, all they have to do is have a guardian or a parent sign off as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Once we have a little more time left for call to audience, I wanted to talk a little about parking, because it's Ferndale's favorite topic. We also have volunteer opportunities for youth and anyone who needs community service. We just ask that they be accompanied by an adult. So on, on the day of Ferndale Pride, from 1:00 to 10:00 PM, you can park at Ferndale High School, Renaissance Vineyard Church, or the Kulik Center, or you can walk to those locations. And you can hop on a Smart Bus. You can hop on a Smart Bus shuttle and they'll bring you to the Livernoy entrance of Pride and they'll take you back there all the way until 10:00. So hopefully that will help clear up some of the congestion and some of the parking blockages we've had complaints about in the residential neighborhoods during Pride. So if you live out that way, simply walk there, hop on one of the shuttles, and if you don't, you can park out there and the parking is absolutely free. So that's another little bonus, you can spend more money at the Pride Festival.
And the shuttle's free?
The shuttle's free, too. Thank you, Smart.
If I may also add, the city has leased out the Ferndale First United Methodist Church lot, and so that lot is available too, located on Leroy Woodward.
With that lot, we won't be providing a shuttle, but it is close enough that it's more walkable for people.
Okay, anyone else for call to audience? If not, our next order of business is a public hearing on the vacation of an alley at 1201 Woodward Heights, formerly Pete's Place. Justin?
Good evening. So I'll just give a brief introduction, but at the, May 3rd, excuse me, April 8th, city council meeting, a, city council approved a resolution to set a public hearing for today's date as required by the city charter, considering vacations of easements and alleys and right-of-ways. So this notice was published in successive weeks as required by ordinance in the local city paper to, for council to consider vacating just the easement that it was with the former alley vacation years ago. So this easement was found after the development at 1201 Woodward Heights was proposed, after a survey was done. It was found that the alley was vacated, but there were some underlying easements that were, for public utilities, that were still with the easement, which is pretty, which is typical for future vacation approvals. And after talking with the applicant, city departments, and then utility companies and posting the notice, there was no opposition or concern or need for any potential utilities under that, that former utility easement.
Okay, since this is a public hearing, I will now open the floor up for public comment and questions. If there's no one, then the floor is, floor is closed and I'll turn it to council for any questions or comments.
I would move that we vacate the easement in relation to 1201 Woodward Heights, that we approve the resolution vacating the easement at 1201 Woodward Heights as presented in the packet.
I support.
Moved and supported. Any further comments, questions? No? Marnie, call the roll.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Pollocka.
Yes, and that passes. Thank you, thank you very much. We will now move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, our items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless someone from council pulls an item for further discussion. So let me begin reading those items. 7A, approval of the regular and special meeting minutes of April 22nd, 2019, is submitted by the city clerk. 7B, adoption of the resolution recognizing May 15th through June 15th, 2019, as Tourette's Syndrome Awareness Month in the city of Ferndale, as submitted by Mayor Protem Pollocka. 7C was moved to a public presentation. 7D, approval to observe Wednesday, May 15th, 2019, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and proclaim the week of May 12th, 2019, as National Police Week, as submitted by police captain. Approval to, 7E, approval to review and accept the employment agreement for city manager Joseph Gaucho, as submitted by HR Director. 7F, approval of 2019 HIDTA subrecipient agreement between Oakland County and the city of Ferndale, as submitted by police, chief of police. 7G, approval to purchase two MSA brand gas monitors from Premier Safety of Chesterfield, Michigan, for fire department operations at the cost of $6,401 to be charged to the account listed, as submitted by the fire chief. 7H, approval of the 2019 Rock and Live Entertainment Performance Agreements and authorization of the mayor's signature, as submitted by Director of Special Events. 7I, approval of the easement agreement between the city of Ferndale Nine Living LLC for Schiffer Park improvements, as submitted by planning, the planning manager. And 7J, approval of the bills and payrolls, as submitted by the city manager's office and subject to review by the city finance committee. What is the pleasure of council?
I move that we accept the consent agenda item as presented. Items.
I support.
Moved and supported. Is there anything anyone would like to address on the consent agenda? Not I would, I would like to address item 7B, resolution proclaiming May 15th to June 15th, 2019, as Tourette's Syndrome Awareness Month in Ferndale. At the regular meeting of the city council of the city of Ferndale, Oakland County, Michigan, held in the city council chambers at 300 East Nine Mile, Ferndale, Michigan, 48220, on the 13th day of May 2019, the following resolution was moved and supported. An estimated three in 1,000 children, six to 17 years of age in the United States are diagnosed with Tourette's Syndrome. And Tourette's Syndrome is defined as a group of childhood onset neurodevelopment conditions known collectively as TIC disorders, which become evident in early childhood or adolescence. And individuals with Tourette's Syndrome are affected by TICs, which are involuntary, rapid, sudden movements or vocalizations that occurred repeatedly. And individuals with, with Tourette's Syndrome face periodic changes in the nature, frequency, and severity of their TICs without forewarning. And individuals with Tourette's Syndrome frequently have co-occurring conditions that complicate their care and diagnosis and cause more important important, I'm sorry, more impairment than the TICs themselves, including attention deficit disorder, attention deficit hyperactivity disorder, obsessive-compulsive disorder, mood disorders, learning disabilities, handwriting difficulties, executive function disorder, and sensory processing disorder. And Tourette's Syndrome has historically been misinterpreted and considered to be a condition of emotional disturbance, instead of a condition of chemical biology. And children with Tourette's Syndrome are often disciplined for manifestations of their disability by educators, who fail to understand the child is unable to control their TICs, and that child may be delayed in their maturity or emotional responses. And individuals with Tourette's Syndrome face discrimination while dealing with their unprecedented disorder, and individuals with Tourette's Syndrome are intelligent and capable of great contributions to society when given the proper support. And understanding this disorder will help guide, guarantee, hope, and acceptance, and a better future for individuals with Tourette's Syndrome. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council recognize May 15 through June 15, 2019, as Tourette's Syndrome Awareness Month in the city of Ferndale. And be it further resolved that the city of Ferndale acknowledges the need of individuals with neurological impairment, and urge all residents to support Tourette's Syndrome awareness and education, in order to assist those individuals and families who deal with the neurobiological disorder every day. Thank you. So, if you would like more information about this, you can visit the Tourette's Association of America. And I know that there's someone in the audience, I don't know if she would like to come up and maybe say a few words. Her name is Rochelle Bono.
The clerk ordered pizza. Hello, and good evening. My name is Rochelle. I am a 37-year-old mother who has Tourette's Syndrome, and I was born with it. It is a genetic disorder that onsets during early childhood development. So most of the clinical studies and treatment options that are available now are focused towards children. And adults like me, who were diagnosed in the 80s and 90s, where there was very little known about it, were left with less treatment options. And now, as adults, people like me are left chronically homeless, with chronic pain conditions, psychological disorders that we cannot resolve on our own, the right misdiagnosis, doctors that don't understand what it is, still being bullied, discriminated against, turned away from shelters, because they can't provide accommodations. And the way that change is made with that is getting awareness out. And the Tourette's Association is something that is all donation-based. They don't get any government funding, nothing like that. And they have, and it's very difficult for families to get a diagnosis now, because they don't want to diagnose kids with it. It's a very difficult disorder to maintain. And it affects everybody in the family. Like, everybody pretty much needs a therapist when someone in the family has Tourette's, because it makes you feel certain things and do certain things only that, that person's the only person who'll feel it for, because of the behavioral issues, and then seeing the person go through physical things that you can't help them with. So, they have things like this, that the Tourette's Association will send out to families, and it's, it has a bunch of information in it about what it is. And then they have ones for educators, and then they have, I don't have the pamphlet with me, but then they have a folder for law enforcement agencies. I, myself, personally, have been somebody who was treated the wrong way, because they didn't, law enforcement, and judges, and people at the jail, and other places, didn't understand what was going on. So there were further things I got in trouble for. So, what I would like to see happen to start is, the Tourette's Association has a chapter in every state where it's all volunteer-based, and they run monthly support groups. There are supposed to be people that you can reach out to, to get information about peer groups, doctors, all sorts of things. And Michigan is one of the states where the chapter is actually not doing anything. And it's actually here in Ferndale. The Tourette's Association of Michigan chapter is located in Ferndale, and it's pretty much dead. I've already spoken with the president of the Tourette's Association, and he said that it's pretty much been like that for a while. And with there being close to 11 million people in Michigan, and with all these, more and more kids now are being diagnosed with it, and being born with it than when I was growing up. So, if, if there could be information packets about it in libraries, clinics, schools, even places like Walmart, you know, places where the general public is going to go, or places where there's information, even at affirmations, they could have something like this up in their display. And there is, June 7 is Tourette's Syndrome Awareness Day, like, known all throughout the United States. And then other countries have their own Tourette's Syndrome Awareness Day. But Tourette's Syndrome Awareness Month is worldwide, May 15 through June 15. And just a lot of places don't have the doctors that know anything about it, they don't have the general public that doesn't know about it. So, if there could just be more things like this available. And then also, people who are diagnosed with Tourette's can get a little card to carry around. I've got to carry mine. It's a disorder that is protected by the ADA, and it pretty much explains what the disorder is. And I, myself, am part of the 5% of people with Tourette's who are actually disabled from it. So I cannot work currently. There's a lot that I can't do without assistance, and it's very difficult getting the assistance. So, more awareness means change. And this is a disorder that is, more and more people have, like, they're being diagnosed with, being born with. So, I wanted to thank you for accepting this as a thing for Ferndale. It's going to make a huge change. A lot of places aren't doing this, but it has to start somewhere. So, I know in Florida, they have a, they have a run each year to raise money. Places like New York and California will do galas, and silent auctions, and golf retreats to raise money, but there needs to be other, other resources available, so.
Well, thank you for coming. I appreciate it. You can have this, by the way. I'll give it to the city clerk to share with you. And I hope that people will step forward and, and hopefully, get more involved with the issue.
Me, too. Thank you.
Okay. So the consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Marnie, call the roll.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Polika?
Yes. And that passes. Before I move on to the regular agenda, though, I do want to recognize, now that the consent agenda has passed, that we have officially hired Joe Gacho as our new city manager. So I'd like to be the first person to say congratulations, Joe. You have served our city well for the past six years, and I know that you will continue to be just as dedicated and professional in your new role as city manager. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, we have the regular agenda with two items to consider. 8A is a consideration to appoint Joseph Gacho as the city's alternative SEMCOG member. I'm assuming you're going to introduce it?
Yeah, I'll introduce it. So the previous city manager served as the alternate for council in SEMCOG. I anticipate I can carry that banner forward, and so this just verifies that recommendation.
Is there any questions or comments from council?
Actually, I will just say, I'm the city council representative liaison to SEMCOG, but sometimes they meet during the day, during the workday, and I can't get out of work to go, so this is where the alternate of the city manager serving in that role is very helpful. So, thank you.
Sure. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve a city manager to serve as city's SEMCOG alternate member.
Support.
Moved and supported. Marnie? Will you call the roll?
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Polika?
Yes. That item passes. Another add-on to your new role. 8B is a consideration of an off-premise tasting room license for Traverse City Whiskey. This is an item that is returning to council for further discussion, after additional information was requested at the last council meeting. Justin, you're going to introduce this?
Yes, for a portion of the item. So, it sounded, previously at the last city council meeting, it sounded like there were some zoning-related questions, possibly some questions about the payment in lieu ordinance, and just the process for the consideration of this license. So, in your packets, I included just some of the primary questions that I heard, but feel free to ask others, that others, or that may arise this evening. So, it's been about three years since the city passed the payment in lieu of parking ordinance, or, excuse me, made an amendment to that ordinance, directly focused on eliminating the off-street parking exemption for essentially restaurant uses with accessory, or on-premise alcohol beverages, or consumption of alcoholic beverages within the central business district. So just focusing on that specific district. The intent of that ordinance was not to, you know, prohibit existing square footage that is already allocated to that on-premise consumption use, but mostly to just eliminate that exemption for, if a new business were to come forth and request onsite consumption, if it wasn't previously dedicated to that use, then they would have to be considered for that payment in lieu of parking ordinance. So, in this specific instance, Traverse City Whiskey did not, was not an expansion. It fit within the existing footprint of the Como's restaurant business. So, there wasn't additional, if there was an additional square footage request, or enclosing the patio, something like that, adding a level upstairs with new square footage, that would have came before, the planning commission came before city council, and that would have triggered the payment in lieu conversation. Since, three years since that ordinance was amended, there's been about 40 or 50 requests directly to me for people interested in zoning information, to open up restaurant, tiki bar, distillery, what have you, in the downtown. That's just myself, and I'm sure the DDA and other staff have had other requests. And so far, only one has pursued a new license downtown, and that was Brooks Brewing. And so they did have to provide payment in lieu for roughly $80,000 that goes into the parking fund. Other businesses that have requested that information, some of them have located elsewhere throughout the city, others were interested in closing patios, or doing an expansion of an existing business. Others, when they heard the information, they just said, "We're not going to look in Ferndale," which is, which is fine. But the intent to not allow for new, new square footage, I think generally has been met through that ordinance. There was a question about why didn't Traverse City Whiskey go to the planning commission that's related to the expansion. If there were an expansion, more than, I believe it's 20% of the floor area, and a certain number of square feet, then it would have went to the planning commission, but didn't need to, since it just fits within that existing building footprint. Other than that, I included just some additional detail in the memo, but I'm here to answer any zoning-related questions that you might have on that topic.
So, Justin, I do have a question. I submitted it for earlier, but you're the winner, so.
All right.
So my question really is, is, as far as the, I went blank, I've got to look at it now. All right. So regarding the taproom, and just looking at the other businesses that have liquor licenses along Woodward, what's to stop those other businesses from doing the same thing? I mean, what's, because I believe if we open up this opportunity, what's to stop the other businesses from doing the same thing?
Sure. I think Dan Chris might be able to answer this a little bit better than me, but the, that would basically be, you know, focused on any other business that has an alcohol-related license. They would have to clear that with the MLCC, of course, but you're right, that, you know...
But it's doable.
It's possible. But it is not, but if it required an expansion of one of those businesses, or something like that, then that's where, you know, council would have the purview to consider payment in lieu of parking.
But if they had the space in their facility, they could?
May I, something tangentially, comment and question around that? So we're defining expansion clearly as an increase in square footage, not as an additional destination point, not as an additional retail point, only by square footage.
Correct.
And so that's not an expanded use to add retail and an additional destination within that square footage?
No, I mean, it's, it's based on square footage, so typically, that just really doesn't come into play unless it is, say, a, you know, retailer turning into a alcohol onsite consumption use, or expansion.
But I feel like it's an opportunity in the ordinance, though, that maybe we overlooked, or, and again, I'm willing to be wrong about this, but if you take an existing structure and you split it, and I don't care the proportion of the split, now you have two businesses there, you have two different draws, the same existing amount of parking spaces, and you add a retail component that didn't exist before, whether they did it under the table or not, whatever, but it's, it's a different function of that space, and that doesn't violate anything as far as, I mean, according to who? Dan?
Well, the way the ordinance is really drafted, I don't think that was really the goal. I mean, through the chair, it was really focused on the intensity of the use, and the way that was typically measured for zoning is based on square footage. And as Justin indicated, to the extent that there was any alteration, well, not alteration, but addition, or expansion of the facility's square footage, then it would, and has been communicated to other establishments, that that criteria would trigger the payment in lieu.
So, what would happen, then? How would the other businesses be impacted? I mean, it was answered a little bit, but I want to hear it from you. How would the other businesses be impacted by additional liquor facilities in, along Woodward corridor?
I couldn't really speculate on that, as far as, you know, square footage goes.
And rents?
Rents?
Increasing rates?
You know, I'm not familiar with what the final, you know, listing price was of for real estate at that corner, you know, so it'd be tough for me to, you know, study and speculate on that.
If I may, if I may add a comment here, I think what we have seen is considerable reinvestment in terms of a sales price of the actual Como's parcel, and I think some significant facility improvements. And anytime you have a transition of ownership, with an above-market sale price, that was well-publicized, and then any additional investment, it could be a factor in terms of implicating other area lease rates, certainly.
I think we're talking just in terms of just that corner, but I'm talking about if we open this up, and other businesses want to do this, could this increase rents to the businesses that don't hold liquor licenses along Woodward, is my question.
Well, just for, if I may, through clarity, this only applies to the DDA, to the Downtown Development Authority area... Downtown Development Authority area. So we're really only talking, if you're talking Woodward.
Central businesses.
Yeah, the central business, yeah, CBD. You're only looking at Saratoga to Camborn.
I think even a little bit, short, short of that, and then.
Short of that?
To, to Livernoy, to Paxton, yeah, and Saratoga.
Yeah, Saratoga to Camborn, yeah. So it would really only be the businesses within that area that, that are impacted. So it would, I think it would be, Cambos is a bad example, because I think they're only a beer and wine-serving license, so they.
Through, through the chair?
Yep.
I have some questions and comments. First, I wanted to say thank you for pulling together the summary of the actual policy that was put in place two years ago, the ordinance. And it was done in partnership with the DDA, with the intent of trying to mitigate the seemingly fast-paced growth of new liquor establishments in our downtown. And just as a reminder, it was a result of a retail study that indicated that more turnover of our downtown property from retail to liquor establishments would mean we would become a stronger entertainment district, solely focused on a nighttime economy versus a daytime economy. And so to that end, I feel like the policy has had an impact, a positive impact, to address those concerns expressed by our business owners. That does not say that this is the end and be-all of this policy, and I do think it needs to be revisited, based off of the concerns expressed about other businesses who would like to expand. But I think that needs to be addressed and clarified and provide an answer for them, because I think those will, those opportunities will always come. My, my thoughts on this, because this has been a challenge as well, I felt like this was a sort of a loophole, where another liquor license establishment is going inside another liquor license establishment. However, but Como's, this was a bar to begin with, where they're going. They already sold liquor there. Como's had two bars. So the whiskey Traverse, Traverse City whiskey is just taking over what was a bar, but it's a separate liquor license. It's a really unique and awkward scenario.
But it could be the same if Dino's decided to split a square footage, and someone opened something else in the other half of Dino's, and we've effectively doubled the alcohol-serving establishments.
I know.
But you can't, I'm sorry, but you can't bring any more people in that space. If you, if you can put a hundred people in, in a square footage of Dino's, and you cut it in half, well, you can't put two hundred people in each of those, in, in those spaces now.
I get it.
You're still serving the same amount, so you can only provide parking for that number of people.
Yeah.
And I understand why you're concerned about the, the retail portion, but I don't think this type of business is gonna be twenty people coming in every evening, parking, going in, buying bottles of liquor, and then coming out. It's not a, I don't think it's that kind of retail establishment. I think it's more of, I'm having a nice evening, I'm enjoying the drink, I'll buy an extra bottle, you know, for the way, you know, for home.
That sounds good, as far as the, how it's supposed to be, but we don't know that that's how it's going to be.
Right. So this is why I recommend to council that staff take a look again at this policy. Specifically, the parking lieu and pavement, is it the right one? Does it need to be tweaked? And does we need to have an addition to that addresses the concerns of splitting other businesses that would take advantage of what I call this is a loophole right now, to close that, that loophole. And one of the influencing factors is, is the liquor, Michigan State Liquor License Control changed, tweaked the law, right, for these types of tasting rooms. When did that happen? Through the chair, Dan?
I believe at the end of, in December of twenty eighteen.
Thank you. It was a lame duck legislative change, which is why it's coming towards us now, and which just wasn't present, you know, at the end of the year. So I, I really just wanted to say I appreciate the thoughtfulness of, and deliberation of this council on this particular instance, because I think, A, we're still concerned about whether or not we're flipping over square footage to re, more liquor licenses, and we're staying on top of that. Two, or B, am I counting, or am I using letters? B. Yeah, I know. B, taking a look at the policies again to see if, if they're working, and which ones we need to add. And, and then C, you know, has there been a change over rents over time, which has been something we've been particularly concerned about? Because the higher the rents go, the harder it is to put retail. But since the city doesn't, or the DDA doesn't own any of those properties, it's all private property, we really don't have control over that from the private market perspective. However, our policies can definitely address some of these concerns. And so, you know, tonight, I'm leaning towards supporting this approval, only if there's the assurances that we will quickly, and quickly means in the next two months, month or two, not like six months to eight months, to, to revise and get some new things on the books that address loopholes and any other changes that are coming down or requests from business owners.
Through the chair, I think that's reasonable. I think we can take a look at, you know, based on what we've heard over the last three years, and what, you know, requests from existing businesses to, to new businesses, I think we can take a look at that.
I, I agree with you, councilwoman Piana. I think, like you say, sooner rather than later, we need to re-look, readdress the payment in lieu ordinance, because I think a lot of people are under the impression that once the dot opens, all of a sudden, that ordinance is gonna go away because we created it because of the limited parking, and that's not necessarily true. It was one of the reasons, in my mind, it was one of the reasons, but it wasn't the only reason. So I, I think that we need to do that sooner rather than later.
Through the chair, I also attended the DDA board meeting that Justin presented this information to, and the board's general discussion was conditions change, and once the dot is open.
To reevaluate and assess.
There's no determination on what the goals are, but it's just, might be a good idea to get back together and just revisit what the goals might be, and how that might be pivoted, and reaction to just the environment changing.
Yeah, I would agree. Just with respect to the Mayor Protan, I have a different view. This was a stopgap measure until we solve the parking issue.
Yeah. And so definitely, we clearly have some policy, different perspectives on the intent and purpose, and, and is it still working under changing conditions? And, and that's, that's what we're supposed to be doing, is making sure we stay on top of it. I'm more concerned is that tasting rooms are now permitted under lame duck legislation, and is more gonna present themselves in the next month while we look at this policy, and more will be somehow pushed through during this period? And so I, is that possible?
I suppose it's possible. I would say that.
The likelihood.
There has not been that conversation, you know, with staff, at least in people looking at zoning information today for that, but, you know. There hasn't been any new requests for that in the past month, but.
And for clarity, if there was a new request tomorrow from a, from a tasting room, if they tried to open something in an existing liquor establishment, we would still be in the same situation we are today. But if they were interested in Tree Dreams, for example, then that would require payment in lieu, because it's a newly-serving establishment.
Correct. It'd be new square footage.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, through the chair, I just wanted to acknowledge that the applicant and his representation is here tonight. If there's any more questions, or if there was, council wanted just a resumé of what the use is and how it interfaces with Como's, I do want to point out that the applicant is here.
Did the applicants want to say a word? You don't have to, but.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Allen, on behalf of Jared Rapp and the Traverse City Whiskey Company. I hear all of what you are saying, especially councilwoman, what you're saying. I just want to make one clarification. It, it is true that this happened in lame duck of the legislature, and, and trust me when I say that this further restricted tasting rooms more than the industry ever thought that the legislature could do. Tasting rooms have always been available, and they were permits, and they were just permits that never came before cities, never had to go through the, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, except for one form. So, but for that legislation, we, we wouldn't be here, unless it triggered your parking in lieu ordinance, which, which it did not as presently configured. I want to assure you that this is, while you may view it as a loophole, I get that, but that was never the owner of Como's intention, that was never Jared's intention. They have been working together for quite some time under, under the impression, and, and with council, that they would be able to do this within the same square footage. And in fact, their capacity's going down, based on the fact that, that the tasting room is going to be in there, and it's not going to be all of Como's. So the, the actual seating capacity is going down, square footage is staying the same. But, but your, your parking, as Mayor Protan stated, is, is, should not be affected, because it is not like a party store. It's not a party store, it's not a bar. So i- in that sense, it is a new animal, but it is not the type of situation where we believe people will be parking to come in and, and buy a bottle and, and leave. It is a tasting room, so that they come in and taste the, the product, and hopefully, with any success, as he has seen in Traverse City, they will buy a bottle of, of the product. But it's, it's not gonna be a lot of turnover, we don't think. So we can answer any other questions that you have. You, you well know that we were, came before the liquor subcommittee and the DDA, and now this is the second time here. But we've read everything that the city attorney and, and the planner put together, and, and we are asking for your vote of approval tonight. Liquor Control Commission is just waiting for the city of Ferndale to say, okay, this is the first and only one that I am aware of, and I practice all over the state, that, that has come out of this lame duck legislation. Trust me when I say that Jared is really active in this industry, and, and what, what came out of that lame duck was not expected, and probably incorrect in some ways, but we're not here to fight city hall or Lansing. We're here to try to get Traverse City Whiskey Company open and, and in the city of Ferndale.
Well, we do pride ourselves on being first. So unless there's any other questions or comment, I would entertain a motion. And I did notice that there wasn't a formal motion written in our document. Here's a recommendation.
Yeah, that's the new format of the new software.
Mayor Protan? If I can just mention, there, there should be, I know there is a local resolution in your packet that the Liquor Control Commission requires. Marnie probably provided that to you before. If you don't have it tonight, it's a simple form, it's called a Form 106. And it just says that the city recommends people.
I'm actually referring, I'm actually referring to, usually a text is, is preset that has the wording that we, you know, that we like to say. Yeah, I see her, I see the document she's talking about. I can't make the motion.
Sorry.
No one, oh, you're looking for?
You can craft it off at the bottom of page eighty-four, the recommended action.
Oh, there it is. Thank you. We got new software, people, for, just so folks understand, we've got new software for managing all of our documents. And so it's slightly different.
We're learning on the fly.
I'm just gonna go ahead, and I move to approve the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for an off-premise tasting room license for Traverse City Whiskey, LLC, to be located at two-two-eight-one-two Woodward Avenue, Suite 200, Ferndale, Michigan.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, just for discussion and voting purposes.
Okay. Moved in second. Do I have any further discussion, comments, questions? If not, Marnie, call the roll.
Councilmember Martin?
No.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
No.
And Mayor Protan Pollock?
Yes. That is a, a tie, and therefore it does not pass. I'm in unfamiliar territory here. So do we just move forward, or is there other action that can?
No further action at this time.
No further action, okay. Then we are done with the regular agenda. We will move on to call the council. Oh, it is me. I'm sorry.
Strong laughing then by council.
Sorry, I'm used to the mayor handling this part. Okay, so first up, interim chief, Peshaw, anything? All set? Chief Palzola?
Good evening, council. How's everybody doing?
Good. You?
Good, good. I just wanted to bring up that it is National Police Week, and on Wednesday, May fifteenth, is officially Police Memorial Day, where we pay homage to our fallen brothers and sisters who were killed in the line of duty. We will have a police officer memorial ceremony at ten AM in front of city hall. I encourage you all, if you're available, to stop by, rain or shine.
That's right here in front of.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks Rec.
Sorry it takes me so long to get up here. I never actually know when you're gonna call them. So I'll be relatively brief. We have our upcoming bike rodeo, which will be taking place at Shiford Park this Thursday. It's a completely free event to the public. It has free bike inspections, a free bike safety course, and for Ferndale residents, it has the opportunity for you to get a free bike license while you're there as well. So we encourage members of the public to come on out and enjoy the, the evening with us. Hopefully it doesn't, the sky doesn't open up on us like it's been for the past week or so.
What's through the chair, what time on Thursday?
Four to eight on Thursday at Shiford Park. And we also have our Ferndale Fusion Fitness Festival that we are working to bring together for the public on July thirteenth. Right now, we're opening it up to vendors, gyms, and potential sponsors that want to come onboard and be a part of it. The fitness festival is generally, we call it a fusion fitness festival, because we're fusing together the different aspects of lifestyles that go along with a healthy living lifestyle. So food, family, fun, fitness, obviously, everything that goes along with that. We try to encompass that into one large event that will be taking place at Marne Row Park. So if anybody has any questions about becoming a vendor, or becoming involved with that whole process, you can contact the Kulik Center at two-four-eight five-four-four six-seven-six-seven. And that's it for me. Oh, summer camp, summer camp is open, and it's filling up very fast. So I want to remind parents at home, if you want to get into summer camp this year, you need to act quickly. The first week is already down to, I think, two spots, as of the last time that I saw it. So any, any parents that want to gather more information, or sign up for the, or register for the camp, needs to contact us or visit our registration site online.
Age ranges for camp?
Five through twelve, and they must have completed kindergarten. Cool?
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you. DPW Dan? Nothing this evening. Cindy, anything else from the DDA? Library, our wonderful library, no? Dan, anything from HR?
I'd just like to say, having been part of the selection committee for the city manager recruitment search, I'm glad that we found the most qualified candidate right here from the city of Ferndale. And I look forward to working with Joe and congratulations.
Cheryl, anything from finance?
Oh.
Oh, she's bringing the laptop too.
Never good.
I just wanted to remind everybody that this Wednesday, the fifteenth, is the last day to pay your water bill if it's late before it rolls onto the taxes this year. Any payments received until the fifteenth will count against that. And then next council meeting, I'll be bringing the resolution to put the specials on the taxes for the summer. And Joe, the finance department has your back, whatever you need, congratulations.
Jordan, anything from CDC?
Uh, nothing else, we're even just addressed to Joe and being, uh, Facebook and council official now.
What?
You got a probationary period to fix these mics.
Yeah, they need to be fixed again. Uh, parking?
Next official holiday is two weeks from today. So that means council meeting will be on Tuesday. Monday will be free parking, it will be posted on all of the payment kiosks and, uh, it will also be on the app. So anyone who tries to pay will be pushed back from doing that.
Excellent, thank you. Kara, communications?
I don't have anything to say.
Nothing this evening. Marnie, anything from city clerk's office?
Yes, thank you. First off, I would also like to congratulate Joe. It's been a pleasure working with you and I look forward to much longer time doing that. What I'd also like to talk about tonight is candidate filing deadline and a little bit about nominating petitions. So, um, we have a lot of petitions that are out and a lot of people are going to be asked to sign them. So one of the things to note, um, the deadline is Tuesday, July twenty-third at four PM here at City Hall. But, um, petitions are kind of like voting. So, um, if you sign more petitions than there are candidates running for an office, you'll be invalidating your own signature for all of the candidates for whom you sign. So it's kind of like overvoting if there's two.
Can I correct you, you said more than candidates running for offices, more than open office positions, right?
Yes.
Okay.
My apologies.
It's okay, I just wanted to catch you.
Yes, yeah, so it's kind of like overvoting. If there were two seats available and you voted for three, then all of your votes would not count. It's the same thing with the petitions, you can't sign for more, um, seats at offices that are open. So I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that early on in the process so that, um, we're not getting any nasty surprises down the line. As I said, the deadline to, um, submit petitions is Tuesday, July twenty-third. Candidates need at least one hundred signatures and not more than a hundred and fifty. And we do check each one for validity and there are lots of reasons that, um, they can be invalidated. So we're always suggesting that candidates file prior to that deadline just to be on the safe side in case they do need to obtain more, uh, signatures. They'll have that opportunity to do that. And also with our new, um, software, I apologize to council for, um, the not so smooth rollout, but we will be, um, definitely working on making it more user-friendly and appreciate your patience.
Thank you, Marnie. City manager?
Yeah, a couple announcements. First, I want to thank city council for the vote of confidence and thank staff for your vote of confidence in me as well. Uh, it is my pleasure to continue working for this community. And I, I've said this in the paper and I've, I'll continue to say this, there isn't a better community and/or staff to, to lead and I'm, I'm just thrilled that I get this opportunity to continue. Second, generally Kevin, I actually stole my thunder, but Memorial Day is, uh, Monday, the twenty-seventh. So the city council's meeting is moved to Tuesday, same date time, um, but just on Tuesday, the twenty-eighth. And, uh, the annual budget book is officially adopted. It's available in all municipal buildings and available at the library as well. So that is now online if you can view, uh, if you have any desire to view city council's budget, it is officially posted and available for public consumption.
Thank you. Dan?
Nothing tonight.
Uh, Councilman Martin?
Yeah, a couple things, Joe, congratulations, you're going to do fantastic, I'm sure. Uh, second, it's that time of year again for the Ferndale Community Foundation grant season. Applications will be available on the city web, website as early as tomorrow. Uh, and this is, these are micro grants up to twenty-five-hundred dollars for area nonprofits. Yeah, so check out the application, uh, and all the information you'll need at the city website. Uh, if you have any questions, my number's two-four-eight-six-seven-two-four-zero-six-seven or you can email me through the web, city website. Uh, thirdly, the Fern Care Annual Dinner is next Thursday. Uh, it is at the Yacht Club on Bell Isle. Tickets are seventy-five dollars and, um, Fern Care, if you're unfamiliar with it, is the clinic that provides care to non and underinsured patients. They also help a lot of folks actually get insurance. They've got healthcare navigators that do just a great job. Uh, so I'd encourage you to attend, it's always a great time, there's a great live auction. So come on out to Bell Isle and the venue's fantastic. So then lastly, I want to talk a little bit about election season, it is upon us. And I've received a great deal of calls for support and encouragement to run for mayor or to run for reelection. And that means a lot to me. I feel like the last seven years have been, seven and a half years have been time well spent and, um, really grateful for the opportunity to serve. Uh, I've made a personal decision, however, that I am not seeking reelection to city council and I'm not running for mayor. There are some great candidates out there who have pulled petitions and will, uh, soon announce or have already announced and I'm excited to support those candidates, uh, that are out there. I do, with the mayor announcing his departure, I don't want this to seem like a reflection of this council who have been fabulous to work with or this staff, which I believe we have the best municipal staff anywhere. And, um, I'm really going to miss working on a day-to-day basis. That being said, uh, I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to continue to be active and serve this community in a number of, uh, different ways. It's just for me personally, um, this journey through elected office for now is, is, uh, is over. And as I reminded Joe, uh, I'm not going to spend a lot of time of goodbyes and things right now. I still have seven months to serve and if anybody tries to lame duck me, I'm going to haunt them. Because there's a lot of work I still want to do in the next seven months. But I think it's fair for everyone who's, um, brave enough to throw their hat in the ring to know, uh, that I'm not going to seek reelection, uh, or any other office this year. So again, thank you, it's, uh, just been absolutely wonderful and we'll spend more time on this later on down the road, but, uh, thanks, that's it.
Councilwoman Leaks May?
Oh, I just really want to just, uh, congratulate Joe on your, your new role, although I feel like you've been here all along, but, um, I'm just, uh, looking forward to working with you and, uh, watching you grow in your role.
Councilwoman Piana?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say, um, thank you, Joe, for being our assistant city manager. I really look forward to working, uh, with you on all of the great things that we're doing in Ferndale. Um, and I also wanted to say, um, to Dan, I, I appreciate and acknowledge your decision, even though I don't agree with it. It has been a pleasure to, uh, work with you and I will certainly not be lame ducking you, um, over the next seven months because we still have a lot to work on and, um, will always appreciate your point of view and leadership. But to that said, um, you know, the team is changing. And, uh, as all do councils and city staff do, and I think what we've seen over the years, uh, dedication and commitment to always being thoughtful and, um, doing the right thing on behalf of our cit- citizens and you've got my commitment to do that, um, with everybody. So, um, with that, I'm going to say that, uh, even though I'm committed, I won't be here at the last, next city council meeting. I, um, will be with Mayor Dave Coulter, who's going in his respective, um, work position to the Mackinac Policy Conference. I am at, which starts the week of, um, May twenty-eighth, uh, the same day as our rescheduled council meeting. I will be there representing Ferndale in my role as the Michigan Municipal League Board President. I'm very excited to go up there to network with our policymakers and, and talk about the things that we care about in Ferndale. So stay tuned and you'll be able to watch me on, I think, Facebook and Twitter and Instagrams and follow along with everything that's going on up there. But speaking of that, I just wanted to let people know that when you reach out to me about an issue, I do listen and I do follow up over time if things change. And I'll give you an example. Years ago, after the state changed our fireworks, um, state law and preempted city control, I got a lot of emails from residents saying, uh, they didn't, uh, like that and if the city could change it. I'm like, I'm sorry, we can't. When the law changed, I reached out a year and a half later and said, hey, this thing that you called, contacted me about, um, was, uh, changed. And you'll be happy to know it's actually addressing those things you've asked us to change. And that happened again recently. Last year, a resident reached out to me about a short-term rental and I have been paying very close attention to policies at the state level around, um, short-term rentals, which is also called Airbnb, um, and things like that. And, um, the proliferation of Airbnbs or short-term rentals in some cities around the state of Michigan has been really interesting, it's really impacting affordable housing. Um, and so it's something that I've been paying attention to. And, and while I support Airbnbs in Ferndale, um, you also want to stay on top of them. So someone emailed me last year and said, hey, I have a challenge with the short-term rental next to me. You know, the, the guests coming on an ongoing basis don't understand our laws with trash pickup and noise and all those things. And I'm like, well, hey, I reached out and said, will you contact your state reps? Let them know that you don't like this preemptive state law change going on. And so we needed all voices this past, um, last week to, um, address this issue. And cities from all over the state of Michigan came out and advocated to stop this bill going through the House, which would have eliminated all control for cities to have oversight on short-term rentals. Um, it was terrible legislation. And, and so this is how, when residents contact me, I may contact you in a year and a half to ask for your help. And so I just appreciate, um, folks always letting me know what's going on on their street or what's going on in their minds, so. With that, I just encourage folks, uh, to sign up for the Rainbow Run. I'm going to do it and I don't run. And so, um, please join me to be my, my walker friend. So, uh, with that, thank you and, uh, that's it.
Thank you very much. Uh, I just want to reiterate what, uh, Michael Leary talked about, which was clean the Ferndale up. It takes a lot of volunteers to, uh, to work this event. Uh, we have a number of projects throughout the city that we work on and it's just a great way to get involved, meet other people within the community and just do something that makes you feel good about, about the city. And the other thing is, uh, Memorial Day, please, uh, come and participate. I know it's a lot of fun to, to, uh, stand on the side and watch the parade, but I, I really encourage you to participate and one of those ways is with the, the foot float. It's very, very, um, memorable experience. You'll, you'll thank yourself for, for participating, even if you just do it once. So with that, um, we actually have to go into closed session.
Yeah, I move to go into closed session for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement. If either negotiating party requests a closed hearing pursuant to MCL fifteen dot two-six-eight, section eight C.
Support.
Support, uh, moved and supported, Marnie?
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro-Tam Polika?
Yes, okay, um, we'll have to vacate, uh, council chambers, but I recommend that we take a five-minute break.
Yep, yes, thank you.
So that we can take care of. And, uh, when we come back, we will go into closed session. So thank you very much, everyone.